Board of Appeals meeting to order, can we start with the roll call?
Mary Semenera.
James Meyer.
Aziz Essen.
Norma Drummond.
Tara Franco.
Thank you, can I ask everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, alright, so just some quick, couple of quick things, changes to our agenda. We actually are not going to have any action on items four, five, or seven. So, should help us move through the agenda a little bit quicker. We do have once out of minutes to approve, we have minutes from August 28th with very few amendments. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then, just a heads up that our next two meetings will be Tuesday, October 23rd, and November 27th, so after Thanksgiving, okay. So item number one is a public hearing for Tucker, however, Mr. Tucker actually submitted a request to withdraw his application, so there's not going to be a public hearing. But we do have, I need a motion to refund his escrow. He does not get his application fee because we actually opened a public hearing on this, so do I have a motion to refund his escrow account?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and so then, we have one public hearing this evening, and where it's an opportunity for any neighbors of this development to comment on, otherwise, all of the other applications before us are reviews, and for the most part, are probably the first time that we've actually seen the applications. So, with that said, item number two is Appeal 2216. Jackson Soil Mine, Vern Jackson, 80 Jackson Road, Hopewell Junction, is requesting an extension of the soil mining permit for Shenandoah Farms, which was granted by the Zoning Board of Appeals on July 8th, 2008, pursuant to Section 194-Jer-75 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, good evening, Mr. Jackson, I see you're here. So, since 2008, you've been operating the soil mine, you have a permit that you get from New York State DEC. The town's permit gets renewed every two years, it just gives the opportunity for the town building department to go out and make sure the operations of the soil mining operation are as we expected them to be, and gives us an opportunity to just hear if there are anything, anything we should be concerned about from your neighbors. So, the building department did go out when the application was filed for the renewal, they determined that everything is operating as it should be, and we do understand that your DEC permit expired this year, but you have gotten the renewal since we last met, so... With that in place, is there anything else you wish to add to, before I open it up for public comment? No? Okay, any comments or questions from board members?
I'm good.
So is there anyone here who would like, wishes to comment on the soil mining permit for Shenandoah Farms, 80 Jackson Road, and Hopewell Junction? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Moved. Second.
All in favor? And there is a resolution to offer, please?
Go ahead, okay. Reference to Appeal number 2216. The applicant being Vern Jackson, Namet Project being owner of Shenandoah Farm LLC, known as Jackson Soil Mining, located at 80 Jackson Road, Hopewell Junction. Resolution being offered by zoning board member James Meyer, whereas the applicant has applied to the zoning board for a two-year extension on a soil mining permit, which was originally granted by the Zoning Board of Appeals on July 8th, 2008. Whereas this action is a type 2 action under secret, no further action is required. Whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Dutchess News on September 13th, 2018. Whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals held a public hearing on September 25th, 2018. And whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals finds that, Mr. Jackson has been in full compliance with his DEC permit, which was originally issued August 22nd, 2008, extended through August 15th, 2018, renewed on August 28th, 2018, and will expire on August 27th, 2023, as well as a ZBA special permit, which was originally issued July 8th, 2018, and renewed through July 7th, 2018, as evidenced by inspection by the town building department on August 14th, 2018. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals hereby approves the two-year extension through August 16th, 2020, of the Jackson Soil Mine special permit in order for the applicant to remove approximately 600,000 cubic yards of fill from his property located at 80 Jackson Road, Hopewell Junction, New York, pursuant to Section 194-75-E2 of the Town of East Fishkill Code. And be it further resolved that from now on, the soil mining permit shall be in the name of, quote, Shenandoah Farm LLC, end quote. And be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk, and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Okay, before we take a second, I'm going to ask for one amendment on what you've just read. For some reason, we're extending this to August 16th, 2020, and I'm not seeing where that date's coming from. Our original permit expired on July 7th, 2018. So we either have it expire on July 7th, 2020, or we line it up with the DEC permit, so...
I would propose we line it with the DEC permit.
I'm okay with that, because at this point, it's already past that date, so if we grant two years from then, I think that's fine with that. So Jim, are you okay if we amend the date of August 16th, 2020, to August 28th?
Absolutely.
Or is it 20, would it be the 27th if it was issued on the, August 27th, because it was issued on the 28th?
Yep.
So August 27th, 2020, or at least that date makes sense, and it lines up with the DEC permit, okay? So...
Again, moved with that amendment.
Second.
Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And myself, so your motion carries, you're all set, okay? Have a good evening. Alright, item number three, that was, again, that was it for our public hearing, so item number three is a review. Item Appeal 3872 Slow Shower, Eddie A. Slow Shower, 40 Brandy Lane, Wappingers Falls, is requesting a four-foot height variance for 38 feet of existing eight-foot lattice fencing, which is in front of the dwelling, a four-foot height variance for 115 linear feet of existing eight-foot high lattice fencing, as well as a two-foot setback variance for all fencing pursuant to Section 194-98 of this zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
So we met with you several months ago, and at that time, you requested that we kind of toll your application because you expected the town board to take some kind of action.
Correct.
It is still, the town board hasn't taken any action, and nobody can guarantee that they will, so...
Well, I corresponded with the supervisor's office and was informed that there's a public hearing and a vote scheduled for January 2019. So I would like to request then, an adjournment until the February meeting, pending the outcome of that public hearing and vote.
Is Mr. Slow Shower in court, or no? Do we, is there actually any violation for this fence?
No.
No, okay, alright, so...
Well, but his permit is affected by this, for his deck, because he hasn't acted on the permit.
He hasn't acted on his permit, has his permit expired?
He'll become null and void if he doesn't get an inspection soon. The deck unfortunately is on, come on, it's on the chopping block, so that is not going to be addressed until the spring, as my contractor is way behind schedule. So, if that permit is going to expire, that permit would then have to apply for renewal, or an exten, or renew the permit.
So has it already expired?
It expires in April of 2019. It's null and void after 90 days of inactivity. Okay, so then, the contractor's going to have to, right, would have to put in an application to renew.
So it is already null and void?
It's already null and... Technically, yes. Okay. So, that good for, okay, so 90 days, I got it.
In the correspondence from the supervisor, okay, are they aware that you have an eight-foot fence? Is that, I have no idea what the town is going to consider, are they going to...
The town, again, just to reiterate...
Considering grandfathering an eight-foot fences?
Again, I don't know the specifics of what they're going to do or not going to do, as per what was told to me from Mr. Wood, but they are, again, considering the change to the current zoning for any fencing and sheds that were erected prior to December 31st, 2017, they're going to grandfather in. Now, they have not given any specifics in terms of the height, type of fence, and so forth, and there's going to be obviously a discussion between the board and a public hearing on that. So, depending on what that outcome is, is going to determine whether I don't have to do anything, or I'm going to have to make some specific adjustments based on that new ruling that they're going to come down with. And since the deck isn't going to be done, and as you said, it has expired, I'm pretty much starting from scratch again next spring.
Okay, do you have something in writing correspondence from this?
I have an email from the supervisor's office when I asked him, and then I just wrote a letter again, asking for an adjournment. But if you're telling me it expired, then maybe I should just, I should come back and just resubmit a new application, or would you be willing to adjourn it to February, based on their January reserve?
If there's not an outstanding violation, right?
We didn't write one, no.
Okay, if there's not an outstanding violation, then...
But then the applicant has no incentive to come back?
Understood, I understood, so, so based on that, we probably should...
Based on, if they tell me, if there's specifics that they're not going to go eight feet, or they say, well, it's six feet, anything's six feet, and there's the max grandf... I'm still going to have to come back and ask you, and then you're going to make a decision, okay, or not okay, and then I'm going to have to fix it. Would that be a correct statement?
And so he's saying, what date in January?
Well, there, the, I'm sorry, the public hearing is whatever, it'd be the third Thursday in January.
Which would be before the fourth Tuesday.
Right.
So we would still be able to have you come in January. So, do we have a motion to...
Well, I can, I prefer, because sometimes, they may not make a decision the first...
Oh, I understand.
So February 2019 would, a month, okay.
Again, his application was filed when?
It was in April of this year.
April of this year, when the permit was issued originally to do the deck.
Right.
Because that had, it all had to coincide, but...
Let's get January, because...
Okay, January is fine, yeah, okay, fine.
Alright.
Nothing is happening in the next few months, anyway, so January is fine.
So, motion to put the, to suspend the application until January?
Are you making that, are we looking for that, or you're making...
I'm just, I'm just saying...
I have no problem with that, so I would make the motion that we suspend further action on this application until our January 2019 meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, adjourn till January 2019, okay?
I wrote a letter for you to file, if you're, it's all right with you, I'll just change February to January, initial it, just so she could have something for the file.
Thank you.
And can you also do us a favor and make a copy of the email that supervisor sent to you, so that is also part of the record? Because you have made it part of the record, so this way, we will have a physical copy as part of the record also.
That's fine, I'll drop that, I'll drop that in the office tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, everybody.
Okay, so items number four and five, the applicants both submitted requests to have their issues adjourned, their applications adjourned, because both are waiting for the results of their surveys. So there's no action on items four and five, so we are up to item number six. Appeal 3881, Dema, Richard and Catherine Demas, 76 Christine Court. Stormville are requesting a 40-foot frontline variance for a proposed 39-foot by 17-foot pool deck, and a 50-foot frontline variance for an existing 10-foot by 10-foot shed, pursuant to Section 194-17 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening, how are you guys?
Good, thanks, so last month, we had an opportunity to talk with you. I think we all agreed that the shed, you moved the shed in as much as you could, because of the elevation-topography difference, nobody can see the shed from the road, anyway. So we understand, yes, it's on the property line, but that, it makes sense where it is, it's screened from the street and from neighbors' views. Now, really, what we were talking about, the remaining issue, was the pool deck. So, last year, you were in before us, you got a variance to construct your pool, the pool is constructed, and now, obviously, you want a deck around it to be able to better enjoy it. One of the things that we talked about was the fact that you're asking for a five-foot deck on the side, the roadside, and that you were asking for it to extend 39 feet, which is, goes well beyond the end of the pool.
Yes.
And so we had some conversation about why? What were you looking to put there, what was really the minimum amount that you needed to be able to, because you had the length of the pool, and then 39 feet of deck in addition to it, where it was going to be at least 45 feet of visible area. And again, you know, as we've talked about before, pools are, you know, only because of the way your lot is laid out, the fact that you really have, your house, which was built so far back, and you're on a quarter lot with three front yards, that you really had no other space for outdoor recreation, and just that made sense. So, but because we granted the variance for the pool, we don't want to make things worse by adding then a 39-foot deck.
Sure.
So, what are you coming back to us with?
I did go back and look at the math and realized there were some mistakes with the survey and what I was looking at. So, from the 39 feet, I was looking to shorten it to 32 feet.
How, how are you looking to, is it along, the, is, it's what extends beyond the end of the pool?
So the deck will start where it said it, well, on the survey, with the pool, but instead of being 39 feet out closer to the road, it'll be seven feet shorter on the end of Sundance Acres.
So what was, I want to say, 17 feet on that end, you're now going to shrink it to 10 feet? Is that what you're proposing?
No.
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 He's cutting, he's cutting off the length, so...
That's what I'm saying, it was 17 feet beyond the end of the pool.
Oh, okay.
Or maybe, it's just, it says 17 feet wide there.
Right, but I, I think it was also 17 feet beyond the end of the pool, hold on.
Oh, no, it wasn't 17, it's definitely 17 feet going front to back, but going from the side of the pool to Sundance Acres.
Okay.
I was going to shorten that end by 7 feet.
It's going to be lined up closer to the end of your house.
So, how much beyond the end of the pool is it going to extend, is the question?
It's 14 feet.
So again, we're going to ask the question, why 14 feet? You had 21 feet, which is a lot more than we talked about, so...
Well, it was, it was 21, so I'm shortening it to 14 on the end, from the center of the pool, the farthest point out. And the reason I was going that 14 out from that side of the pool was to get around the corner of the patio, so when I have stairs going down, they're not going to run into the patio wall that I have there. It's going to be right at the edge of it, so it'll, the walkway there, or stone path I'm going to put in runs right on the wall, the patio, on the outside wall.
And it'll still be five feet wide at the pool end, and 17 feet wide at the opposite end.
Correct.
So the total length was going to come down from 39 feet down to 32 feet?
Correct.
Overall length? Okay.
Yeah, the length will shorten from 39 to 32, but the width will still stay the same.
And how far from the end of the deck along the side of the pool? How far more does the pool extend? So what's, in essence, what's the total width of, not obstruction, but of the structure that you're going to see from Hidden Acres Road?
So if I add, if you're, are you asking me the length of the pool and the length of the deck combined?
How much of the pool will not have a fence, will not have a deck to it?
Along Hidden Acres Road, is that what you're looking at? That'd be six feet.
Okay, so...
It's not a straight line, because it obviously is, it's curved at that point, but that's, it's six feet.
So, six feet to the end of the curve, the, or the start of the curve?
Well, I'm not, can I...
To the end of the pool, that's really what I'm asking?
End of the pool.
Six feet, okay. So we're talking six feet and 32 feet, so you're 38 feet of structure. And how tall is the deck going to be, railing on it?
The railing, I don't know, because I don't know what the codes are, and I haven't finalized those plans with the contractor yet. But I'm going with the minimum, I don't know what that would be. 36. And just to, I think we've had this discussion before, I have a row of trees at my property on Hidden Acres, and then my two neighbors that are behind me, or directly behind me on Hidden Acres, they have their own woods in front, so I can't, we can hardly see each other's homes. Obviously, winter time's a different story, but...
No, it's your credit, last month, when you were here, you gave us some pictures that really showed that there was a lot of vegetation on that side, so... So between the topography, the grade difference, and then the screening that's there, it's, you're really not talking about some structure that would very well be seen, but again, as you go higher with the railing, you're making it more visible.
Well, the pool deck itself will pretty much be at ground level because of the way you're talking about the sloping, so we're just really, we're looking at the railing would be the only part that would be visible, you know, give or take, I, you know, I can't speak for everybody.
So what's the pleasure of the board?
So basically, the sump, the pump pad is not moving, and the deck does not have any, other than the railing, doesn't have any canopy or any kind of structure around it, and so, and you're going to line the edge of the proposed deck in line with the walkway, patio walkway, basically.
Yes.
The stairs, basically, in that, so it'll be all, so it'll be closer to the split-level house.
Correct.
Yeah, I think it's reasonable, I mean, unfortunately, you have three front yards, your house is built way back, so you have all of these conditions that we can't really change at this point. So, I mean, I'm okay for public hearing.
I just have two, well, it's pretty much the same question, but I'm going to ask it twice, if you don't mind. I thought, I'm just going back to the, well, a question about the pool and a question about the shed, because on the, it's the agenda for tonight, that we're requesting a 40-foot frontline variance for the pool, and then a 50. I could have sworn that with the shed, I asked for a 49 foot, but I don't know...
You said it's on the property line.
It's a, no, it's a foot inside the property line.
Is it a full foot in?
According to my survey, it is. That's why I thought I asked for 49, and I, I don't know if you want to check that and I had, like, a follow-up with the other question.
So if it's, so then it's 49 feet?
Okay, because I just want to be correct with your math, your number is mine.
Survey says 40, one foot away from the property line.
Yeah, well, again, it says the one end is at 1.5 feet, and the other one is one feet, so I think you're right, 40, 49 feet is the variance you're looking for, you're right.
Okay, and then with the...
So Pam will correct that for the public hearing notice.
Thank you, and then with, what did I ask for? I thought I asked for a 41 foot with the deck.
If you're 9.9 feet away, you will need 41 feet.
That's why I thought I asked for it, and then I see 40, and I was... Because I don't have my original application here, but I know if it's 9.9, I obviously need that extra nine inches, so that's why I was asking for the 41.
Actually, I see 42.
Okay.
That's where the confusion started.
So can we go with 41, I mean, in the middle?
Yeah, you're going to need 41, and again, a five-foot wide area is the general acceptable thing for accessibility issues, so... Not that you, you know, really need it, but you've got people walking around, and you're going to need the five feet, probably, so...
Okay.
Okay, so that's going to be 41 feet. For a 32 by 17 foot, about that, Pam? Okay, do I have a motion to advertise?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, Pam will give you your instructions, or unless you have your sign from last year, you can update it. We'll see you next month.
Okay, thank you very much.
Alright. Alright, there is no action on number seven, so we are up to number eight. Appeal 3883, Monti, Nicholas Monti, 197 Hillside Lake Road is requesting a seven-foot sideline variance for our proposed 29-foot by 14-foot detached garage, and a 56-foot frontline variance for a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling, which was built in 1940, pursuant to Sections 194-107(c) and 194-121 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening.
Alright, so this is the first time we're seeing your application, so if you don't mind taking us through what you are proposing.
I'm looking to put a one-car garage for storage on the side of the existing house, with a six-foot space between the new garage and the house, which limits my setbacks, as well, need a variance.
I guess I have to ask the question, why not attach it to the house? You have windows on that side of the house?
Windows on that side, right in the kitchen, the bedroom.
So you need some natural light, or, well, or for, means a Vgress?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, that makes sense, how tall a garage?
Nine foot, nine-foot exterior walls.
And so the garage is only 14 feet wide? Are you going to have patio or something in between it, or are you going to leave enough area there for mowing? What are you proposing in between?
We were going to be putting a breezeway in, because we were told we need to connect the two together, just with an overhang.
Got it, okay, so it's not detached, it will be attached?
It's an attached garage, then, yeah.
Attached.
Should I correct that?
Yeah, let's correct that, because if it's, if you have the breezeway, it is attached.
Do you do breezeway?
Do you need it?
I mean, is it needed, is it required?
No.
Rather not have it, if we don't need it.
So we want to leave it detached?
Detached, yes.
So amend your statement.
Yes.
What's it going to look like, what color, is it going to match the existing house?
Yeah, yeah.
How close is your neighbor's house to your property line?
The house, there's actually, on the other side of the property line is their driveway, and then the house, I would say probably 75 feet from the property line to their house.
Okay, have you talked with your neighbor about what you're...
Yes.
Okay, and...
She's very, she's good with it.
Okay, that, that's helpful. Do you have screening on that side, is there trees, is there fence, anything, there's trees?
There's Santa trees, yes.
Okay.
Not total blockage, but, but big trees along that side, pines.
Okay. And then you'll extend the driveway to this garage?
Yes.
And so from the corner of the new garage, the shortest distance to the property line is, what you're describing is eight and a half feet?
From where? Oh, from the, from the property line to the corner of the house, yes, eight and a half feet.
Yeah, the front corner of that proposed garage.
Yes.
And actually, in this case, if you moved your garage forward, you're actually closer to the property line?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, 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 I, I understand, you're actually maximizing, minimizing your variance, maximizing the distance from your neighbor by pushing it back, so...
And because of the location of trees, moving it forward, we'd have to remove trees in order to be able to get it along with the mower.
You'd actually do have more disturbance, okay.
What about moving it backwards, just for the record?
Just, we just want to line it up with the back of the house, to make it, you know, look good.
Where is your septic, your well?
Septic's in the rear, the rear far corner, and the well's out in front.
Okay, so you're not impacting on either one of those? Why not, just asking the question, why not put it on the other side of the house where you've got more room?
Because the septic tanks over there, in the well.
That's why we ask. Okay, that, that... And again, if the other, if your neighbor has their driveway and their garage on that side, that probably makes sense then, too. Alright, so do I have a motion to advertise?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. So we will see you next... So we will see you next month, Pam will give you your instructions for your sign.
All right, thank you.
Okay. All right, item number nine, Appeal three-eight-eight-four, Marrow, Mike Marrow, eighty-two C. Cor Lane, Hopel Junction, requesting a four-foot sideline variance for our proposed twenty-six-foot by twenty-four-foot attached garage pursuant to section one-ninety-four dash one-oh-seven-C of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Just fine, thanks.
Okay, so again, this is new for us as well, so C. Cor Lane. I do have to advise you, apparently you have a screened porch that has no permits.
We should have permits on file.
Rick, can you double-check that? No, you did already. All right, just a heads up, you need to clear that up with the building department, please.
Absolutely.
Okay, so take us through your application, please, if you don't mind?
Sure, um, original plans were actually to do a twenty-eight-foot-wide detached garage.
Okay, which would have been a double bay?
Exactly, um, it still is, but because of where the property line is, we did reduce it to twenty-six.
Okay.
And went through the drawings process again, which was a lot of fun. Right now, it is going to be a double-bay, single-door, um, to store two mid-to-large-sized vehicles, and I've got two boys with a burgeoning bicycle and motorcycle racing careers, so the, the space, we wanna make sure that we keep the, uh, the property pretty darn clean.
Okay.
So trying to get maximized storage space with that footprint.
You have a nice, big property, wow.
Yeah, it's great.
But they don't ride motorbikes on the property, right?
Of course not, they would never do something like that.
Good answer, okay. Have you talked to your neighbor, how close is, again, the neighbor's house on that side?
Yes, have, but I've actually spoke with neighbors, two houses on both sides of us, and...
All right, so it, does their driveway, again, like the last one, line up on that side as well?
It does, it does.
Yeah, okay, sometimes that makes it very helpful, is there screening, is there trees there, vegetation?
There's one large tree, there's a few smaller trees, there's not much to separate it vi- uh, visually.
Okay. And in your case, you're attaching it, so...
Yes.
How, how tall is it gonna be?
Uh, seventeen, I believe, is the height of the roof.
Why so tall?
Because of the pitch of the roof?
Okay.
And how it's gonna project off the house.
So again, the way you're lining it up, okay, to match, probably to match your existing house?
Um, to match that level, yes.
Aside from the screen porch permit, I'm not seeing any other concerns on this one.
Uh, what about the jungle gym, do we need a permit for that? For the jungle gym? Okay.
Kind of, uh, like the setback before.
Yeah, it looks like the setback should be okay. All right, so, in it, in your case, by the way, you can't really put it on the other side, you'd be impacting your other side. So this is, this is the side that makes sense, this is the side that you have the most room on.
Side that the driveway's already on as well.
Right, okay. Motion for public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so we will see you next month, and Pam will give you your instructions for your sign, please. All right?
Thank you.
All right, item number ten, Appeal three-eight-eight-five, LMD Property Holdings LLC, LMD Property Holdings LLC is requesting a variance to build a house on an undersized lot, point-seven acre in an R-one zone, at four-seventy-seven Dowa Road, Hopel Junction, which was created in nineteen sixty-two pursuant to the Schedule of Bulk Regulations, property is in the ownership of Matika.
Hi there.
Hi, how are you?
Doing well, thank you.
So, again, this is the first time we're seeing your application, so if you don't mind taking us through...
Sure, so I represent LMD Property Holdings, um, we're in contract to purchase this, and so we have a letter from owner, so she's, she understands what we're doing, that we're seeking a variance. This, to our knowledge, it's existed in its current state since nineteen sixty-two. It's an R-two zone, so we understand that it's undersized for the, the zoning, or for, for being a, I think, yeah, I'm pretty sure...
R-two zone or R-one zone?
No, 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 R-one, R-one.
R-one, okay.
Um...
That makes it easier.
Yeah, so it's closer to it. So we're not looking to create something that's undersized, it, it already exists, and we are just hoping to get...
All right, but the, Ms. Matika owns the property immediately next to this.
Correct, looking at it from the street, she's to the left.
So our question is, why are the lots not being combined, the code says that the lot should be combined?
Oh, we're not, we're not building for her, she owns, if you're looking at...
She owns two lots?
Yeah, correct.
One being undersized?
They're both undersized.
They're both undersized.
Yeah, that whole, that whole street.
And there's no house on this property already?
Correct.
So the lots should be combined?
So if that's, I mean, if that's the ruling, then, then I understand, there, there are multiple homes on that street that are below an acre, and, so, we, we were assuming that it was going to be a buildable lot, but, yeah, we're not hoping to split it.
No, it, it, it exists, I understand that.
Sure.
And, and there are certain circumstances where these lots exist, but it depends on when the lot was made undersized and when it was created.
Right.
And I think in this circumstance, we looked it up, and it actually was after zoning went into place, so it was sixty-three, not sixty-two.
The zoning went into place in...
Yeah, well, and zoning went into place in sixty-three, but I think with what we saw for the records associated with, because this is, um, part of the I-84?
Yeah.
There was an I-84 taking, so again, the property owner got some compensation probably from New York State with the, with property taking associated with I-84.
Yeah, right.
So, the lots should be combined.
Yeah, that's what the statute says, if you end up with an undersized lot, and you own two lots together, they shall be considered one lot.
Okay.
So this, although you have two deeds, but you're really, that's a, that sets for each half, it's really one lot, as far as the town is concerned.
So then if there were two different owners for these two different lots, that'd be a different story, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
But because she owns two adjacent?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any other information that we could provide that, not would change your minds, but, but that, I know that she's looking to sell it, and I know that that's not your problem, but then, there's no way that we would be able to bu- get a variance for this?
Yeah, I guess, I guess that's the other question, what prevents her from just selling it, and somebody coming back later on?
Right, yeah.
Buyer beware.
Ah, and then...
You'd still need a variance, 'cause it's an undersized lot, and it's new construction.
Okay, so that would be a different way?
You'd be buying a lot that may or may not be buildable.
Right, right, so we would still need the same variance?
We would need the variance, the question is, is when you come in here knowing that it should have been combined with the other one, are we gonna say?
Right.
You knew that it was one lot, you shouldn't have done it.
Well, the, he would have known, but again, the person who sold them the lot was already compensated for the fact that this is now an undersized lot.
Yeah.
And the fact that this person would have then sold a lot that might not be buildable is, you know...
So in other words, I don't want you to make the logical leap here, that if you buy it and then come in under your name with...
Right, right, I won't assume what you would be doing.
You should not assume you're gonna get a variance.
I understand that, yeah. And then, just to go back to the, to make sure I understand, nineteen sixty-two is when I believe, I have a deed for nineteen sixty-two, when did, when did the zoning, when did it become R-one?
February of ninety, February of nineteen sixty-three.
So then, you're saying that the zoning...
Yeah, but I think what that, well, I think what we saw was that the closing, or the tran, the, the reduction of the size of the lot with New York State happened after February of nineteen sixty-three.
I see.
And it was still nineteen sixty-three, but it was after zoning went into effect.
I see.
So that was, that's where the issue is, so your, the lot was created, okay?
Right.
But she accepted compensation from New York State after zoning went into effect, making this lot undersized.
Okay.
And her lot also undersized, the lot where her house is, so she has two undersized lots right next to each other.
Okay, okay, um, and it doesn't change it that there're mul, there're other ones other than her, where there're lots that are under an acre on that same street?
Are they already built on?
Yeah, this is the only lot on that stru, or, yeah, it's the only lot on that street where it doesn't have a structure, and there are other ones that have homes.
Yeah, 'cause her, the house that she sits on, the same thing happened to, so, if you excluded this one, she would be under, on an undersized lot, we understand that. But again, the law says that if you have two adjoining undersized lots?
Right, I understand, I see.
You gotta combine them to get the proper-sized lot.
Okay, okay. Is there anything else that you think I should know, as a, as we consider buying it, as far as zoning goes? Thank you for explaining that.
That, that's not our role here?
Yeah, okay, I understand, okay, all right, thank you.
We're not, well, some people may be attorneys, but we're not here.
No, no, I'm not asking you for advice, it's just, is there any other information?
Okay, are you willing to withdraw your application, so we can refund you the difference, or, because we have not gone into public hearing, but this is a review, so you can request at this point, or you can send a letter later on?
Yeah, can we do that, can I send a letter?
Fine, then you'll get refunded all but five dollars, so...
All right.
Okay?
So what's, you wanna...
Yeah, so I'll send a letter, I'll talk to the other partners on that.
Okay, so you're gonna talk to somebody and then send a letter?
Perfect, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, item number eleven, Appeal three-eight-eight-eight, I'm gonna actually take the next three together, okay, to consolidate, because it's the same applicant, so we have Morgan Pena, Joanne Morgan, Fred Pena, sorry, Penna, Pena?
Yeah, Penna's fine.
Penna, okay, thank you, Two Kane Drive, Stormville, requesting a variance to allow a camper to be parked in their front yard pursuant to section one-ninety-four
Right.
dash fifty-two-point-one of the zoning ordinance, the second is requesting a variant, a two-foot variance for an existing six-foot fence, which is located in front of the frontline of the house pursuant to section one-ninety-four dash ninety-eight of the zoning ordinance, and the third is requesting a variance to allow a shed under one-hundred-and-forty-four square feet in size to remain located in front of the house pursuant to section one-ninety-four dash one-oh-seven-B, three of the zoning ordinance. Okay, so you are up, let's take them one at a time, um, so let's, do you wanna start with the camper?
Sure, I submitted something earlier today for your review, do you have a copy, or should I submit it for record?
We have it. So...
So, when we went through it, um, we had looked at relocating the camper and the shed, as, as we talked about there, the house was orientated with a very long driveway, and so, uh, where the camper is, is part of that long driveway, to add another driveway or to extend the driveway on the other side of the house would be, um, difficult, and obviously adding impervious surfaces and, uh, adding another driveway. That, that, that's why we have it where it is, so, um...
Okay, we understand, you have a corner lot.
Right.
You have a, and the lot, and the, the filed map clearly says that the draw, access to this lot is supposed to be where it is, okay? And so the way the lot is, like many lots, it's a very long lot, so it's not very deep, but it's very long, so you have a lot of front yard on the front of your house, and then on what you might consider your side, but it's another front line, you have an, you know, frontage on Kane Drive as well, so, um, like many other lots, you do have two front yards.
Right.
So, the code says that recreational vehicles are not supposed to be parked in the front of the house, in your front yard. Is there some accessibility issue, or some reasonable accommodation issue, is there some reason why we should consider this?
Yes, so, when, when I looked at, you know, the placement of the, of the recreational vehicle, again, looking at bringing it around to the other side of the house would require extending that driveway throughout the front of the house, or attempting to create another driveway on the other side of the house, the septic is on that side of the house as well.
Okay.
So putting a driveway over the septic would be impossible.
That, that doesn't make any sense, okay.
And so, uh, keeping it where, where it is now would be the most logical location to, to place the vehicle, although, again, it's, it's, it's visible, but it's contin, it's continuous with the rear side of the lot, so if you ta, take a look at, uh, figure four, figure four ki, shows what I, I, I look at when I read the code, uh, what is the rear lot, so the rear lot extends along the rear portion of the house across the entire, portion of the lot, so that green area I look at as the rear portion of the lot, um, and there is a fifty-foot setback on the Kane Drive side, and there's a fifty-foot setback or yard requirement on the Lee Town side. The camper would be in that green area, and the shed is in that green area, so even though they're, they're visible from the road, they are in that, in that green area. That's, that's one...
So you're using the code that applies to structures, that no structures belong in the front yard, and you're applying that to a camper, and our, a recreational vehicle?
Well, the recreational vehicle code says that it's to be parked in the rear yard, but when I look at my lot, um, the rear yard is that green area, with a fifty-foot yard requirement or setback requirement from Kane and from Lee Town, um, so they are technically, or if it's read in, in, in the way I'm reading it, it would be in the rear yard.
Okay.
Alternative to that, you know...
You're looking at figure four, is what you said, right?
Yeah, figure four, where you see the green...
Fortunately, I don't have a colored one, it's all the same.
Oh, black and white, well, let me, I have colored copies, because that might make it a little bit...
Yeah, 'cause I was, they didn't, they couldn't copy color for it.
Do you have room to park it behind your house?
No, there's, there's no room back there, there's no, there's no way there's, to create a driveway.
I guess that's the question, you can't go off Lee Town Road through that.
Yeah, then creating another driveway, um, is it, are the copies...
Do you have a deck behind your house? Yeah, come on up, all right, 'cause if, looking at it from an aerial, I'm seeing something back there?
Yes, there, there is a deck.
So this is all tremendous trees, this is the back of the house, we've got a twelve-foot deck that came with the house, and you can see that the trees even overhang over the top of the house.
Okay.
So, and it's, it's glacier boulders, I'll show you a larger copy, do you want me to?
Yeah, you can see clearly.
I enlarged the Google Earth, uh, copy of the house, this is all boulder and woods, and in fact, our neighbor's property is, I believe we only have, I enlarged this as well, I believe from the foundation, if you take the foundation and you add the twelve-foot deck out of the dining room, this was forty-five feet to the neighbor's property, and now you're taking twelve feet for the deck on top of it, and this is basically this entire, this entire rear of the house is all enormous boulders and enormous trees, and if, and this was the drawing that we put together...
Right, so, and so attempting to put the dri, the driveway through here was, was very difficult, I, I attempted to clarify some...
Well, the deck is there, so it's not possible.
Yeah.
Because the footings of the deck are here, so there's no way to get around it, so the corner lot code being from the foundation here, and the foundation here, gives us basically nothing to work with, because this is glacier boulders and forest, and then these are the septic fields, so we are really in hardship of, of what we can use on the property, if this is the drawing, when I came up to the zoning department, I said, could you just clarify this corner lot code, and it basically renders almost seventy-five percent of the property unusable by us, for us, and gives us just about here where we're attempting to get the pool, because this is, again, this is the foundation, so the footings are here for the deck.
You should draw the deck on it.
This is my neighbor's property.
So, where it says, rear, what's it say there, it says rear?
I said back, and then...
Well, it's rear yard, rear yard, but...
I called it the back, I guess it's the rear.
Well, it says the rear, you say you wanna put a pool, oh, there is a pool there.
Yes.
Yes, so that, that was one of the variances that we...
So, where it, so the, where the word, where it says the word rear, is there a reason why you couldn't put the recreational?
It got the boulders back there.
We've got boulders and trees, and we've got the footing to the deck.
Well, to the extent...
So...
Right, so...
But you've got forty-five feet, if we take off twelve feet for the deck, you've got another thirty-three feet there.
But it's all boulders.
It's all boulders. That, that, that's, I mean, again, topography is important. We don't wanna have you disturb. You don't wanna be disturbing your property and the screening that exists between you and your rear neighbor, so.
And our neighbor's house, which is, let's see, so this is Kane. So our neighbor's house is here, but he's got a pool and a deck, and I really don't think he wants to look at the back of our camper.
Okay, do you use the camper all year round?
Um, we didn't use hardly any this year, but we do use it in the fall. We like to use it in, you know, running around.
We're gonna ask you, but go back to the microphone, please? That's okay, don't worry. We're just asking some questions. So, there are, not for nothing, but there are facilities in town that store campers. And so if you, if you were, campers, people that used your camper very, very regularly? So, again, on the weekends, it's not there? Then, we make the argument that you're using it, it's...
May I also just show you this picture?
Okay.
From the driveway, which is here, this hundred and forty-two foot driveway, there is a blacktop area that, again, if we had this entire rear yard, it would be, it's not in the driveway. It is cut into.
Right.
Is there screening that you can put up? Can you put some evergreens up, not just trees?
See that, and so, the entire front of the yard is completely open, that fifty-foot on both sides is very open. So the corner of the lot is cleared, and one of the things that I thought was the reason why is they kept the corner clear for sight distance of corner. So our front is very exposed.
Where are you standing when this bottom picture is taken?
That's Kane Drive.
You're standing on Kane Drive, so it's very visible. That's why I'm asking, can we put, can you put up some evergreens or something, so that it screens it from Kane Drive? It's the town code that says RVs don't belong in the front yard.
Right.
Okay, so if we, if there's an opportunity to screen it so that it's less visible, then that gives us something to work with.
Right, screening either side of the camper would be possible. We could add landscaping and.
Yeah, it'd be a lot cheaper than paying for storage, honestly, at the end of the day.
The giant boulder that's alongside of it, that you can see screens quite a bit of it. Those boulders are huge.
It's white, it's bright, in this, you know, that's what I'm concerned about.
All the pictures, you can see it fairly easily.
Yeah, and even along.
Right, the other way, too.
Right, so what about in the front, behind the stone wall?
To move the camper?
No, put some more screening, put some evergreens along there.
But that, again, when I look at it, that corner is important to keep clear for sight distance. Putting vegetation, you can, and I've seen corner lots that do that.
Doesn't have to be right at the stone wall, it can be a little bit further in.
Yeah.
And away from the corner.
Away from the corner, is what we're saying.
Your recreational vehicles, how far from the road?
Fifty-four feet.
Fifty-four?
No, how far from the road?
From Kane Drive.
Oh, from Kane Drive or from Lee Town?
Kane Drive is fifty-four feet.
Yeah.
Fifty-four feet. So I mean, you could go thirty feet in and start your screening, or twenty-five feet in from the corner and start your screening.
Start some screening around the rock.
Still have some sight line. And you can put it, like Cher said, you can move it in a little bit, too.
I mean, you have a house that's very visible from the road.
Right.
I would think putting some screening in actually was gonna add some value, because it makes your yard, your front yard more usable.
We were looking at screening further down, along the edges. I wanna say past where the.
Where the septic fields are.
Yeah, towards the back, which gives screening as you approach from there. But keeping that corner, I thought was one of the aesthetic things that would be desirable to preserve.
You do for traffic, you have to, you have to take that into consideration.
Right, so.
Well, we did. We bought the arborvities, those ones that are supposed to be tall and thin, and we put them down by here where the septic is, because this is, as you're coming down Lee Town, you can see constantly, there's no privacy whatsoever. But, putting trees here, we can't water them, because the spigots are here.
We did, those died, but we could try to replant them.
There's no hose long enough to water anything, but we could certainly.
You could put like bags or something on the bottoms of them, too.
Yeah, there's different things.
There's means to do that.
Tried to have screening done here.
And we're continuing to look at landscaping along the Lee Town Road, Lee Town side, because there is a lot of traffic that goes along Lee Town.
It's very possible to have privacy.
And we've been looking at screening, but mostly up to here, so that the front of the house still, you still have visibility, because that is the primary face of the residence.
And making a left here, you need to have clearance.
But again, I understand why you're doing that.
Yeah.
But we're concerned about one thing right now, which is your request to allow the recreational vehicle to stay in that cut, that you're blacktop cut where it is.
Right.
So what can you do, so that people can't see it?
You have a bright white camper, okay?
We will plant any kind of tree that you would like us to plant.
Even with arborvities, you wanna be careful, you're not just planting candy for deer, so you wanna be careful that you get the.
It will be easier, 'cause like I said, this spigot is here, to reach there. This was tough, we couldn't.
I mean, your other place to put it is actually just this side of your driveway. The other side, the street side of your driveway. Where you, where.
She's talking about this, she's talking about the screening.
Oh, I thought you meant.
Along your driveway, along your driveway. You can plant, yes, you can plant the screening there, you can put bushes right there, and then it keeps your front yard open, but it's gonna screen the.
Right.
But, that may not be desirable either, because where are you gonna push the snow then, other things, so.
Certainly, at all.
We're not gonna tell you what to do. We're asking for your suggestions. We can say you have to do screening, but you gotta come with some proposals for us to consider.
I think what would make sense is for you to come in with a landscape plan.
Okay.
All right, because this is gonna apply to the next issue, too, which is the shed.
True.
The shed is very visible as well, all right? And, I mean, right now, the picture that I have here dated September 12th, did you give us this picture, or is this, Rich, is this yours? There's something yellow leaning against the shed, so there's, it's very, very visible. So the screening there would also shield that. Now, I understand there's another shed on the property. It's on the other side where you're saying the septic is, so it's off, so it's not on the septic, but it's on the other side.
I think the yellow thing is a kayak, I believe.
Yeah, that's what it looks like. It's a kayak or something?
I was probably leaning it up to drain the water off, because it probably got filled up with water, and it spouts on the bottom.
I figured it out before you showed me the big picture. I had the big picture before you showed me.
So.
Those, we're making racks underneath the deck in the back.
Okay.
So those will be racked.
That's fine. It's, if we're, if you put some screening up, it's less of a visible, for your neighbors. That's really what we're concerned about. All right, you don't want neighbors being, you don't want drivers being distracted, and you don't want your neighbors getting upset. Why do they have a camper in their driveway when I have to pay to put mine in storage? Okay, so.
Did, did Figure?
You have some, some of those boulders are just great. They're huge. Yeah, exactly.
I tried to sell them to Pauline Property, because they're always looking for boulders, because I would love to have them off of the property, because they're completely around the whole back of the, the entire rear of the property are, one of them's the size of a Volkswagen bug car.
Yeah, I believe it. I'm just seeing the one along the driveway.
Makes it very challenging to be able to use the property at all.
Okay. Okay, so, so a landscape plan would really be helpful.
Sure.
Okay, so now let's talk about the pool, or the, sorry, the fence for the pool.
Yes. As explained in the writing, we originally applied for a pool. It was supposed to be a half-in, half-out pool. That really was what we were looking for originally. And when the contractor finished, he didn't place the pool where we had wanted it. So we didn't have a level area in the sun. The level area was in the back by the shade. And although we attempted to clear a couple of trees to get more sun by the pool, it still was in the wrong location. Not in plan, but in the wrong location as far as elevation. It was supposed to be much lower down than what was ultimately built. And we struggled with that for quite a while. We tried to negotiate with the contractor, reset it, even talked about adding some changes to it, and adding some dollars to the project. But he never came forward. We were thinking about, you know, some litigation possibly, and then he ended up evaporating. So, he was not available to continue to try to modify the project. So we were left with this pool that wasn't in the right elevation. And this was the plan that, you know, I started to come up with. The pool was located in plan as, as with the building permit. One of the things that I think Joanne could talk to, is the building department came out and said, "Just make sure that the pool is not forward in front of the house." And that the fence that was there was where the new fence is now. So we laid it out in plan, the way it was agreed with the building department, but the retaining wall was necessary in order to give a flat area around the pool that we had hoped. So that was.
Okay, so this is an above-ground pool?
It was originally supposed to.
That's what the permit says?
Yes, it was supposed to originally be an above-ground, half-in, half-out. That was the style that we had seen in neighbor's yards, and we thought it would.
So with an above-ground pool, you would've put up a six-foot fence, and we would've understood that you need the fence. But because you expanded this whole patio area, you've now created a, up to a four-foot wall, and I understand it's less than four feet, and now you've put a six-foot fence on top of it. So you really have created a ten-foot, or almost ten-foot obstruction there, okay? So this is really more of what the issue is, because you didn't really need the retaining wall. It was in your interest of wanting a patio. I get that, okay? So, the question is, how do we work with it from here? I mean, where there, it's less than four feet for the wall, so they didn't need engineering plans. But I also understand you are an engineer, so I would presume that you, we're not gonna put something up that.
It was, it was a prefab.
Was not meant to be there for a long time, okay? So, but we do now come up with an issue, though, that you've now created something that goes from nothing to ten feet.
Yes.
So, and again, it's bright white, it's very visible. Do you, can, but this is where you're saying you can't, you tried putting some arborvities up, and so, but you couldn't?
Oh, on, yeah, landscaping on the front here, in front of the fence, we never really talked about. We are talking about some landscaping. We weren't thinking on that side, more on the other side.
Okay, how are you fencing in the pool? That's what I, I'm not sure I understand, 'cause this fence doesn't go all the way around, so. Is there a fence around the whole pool, and what is the material of that fence?
So the other object, so we only provided privacy fence on the Lee Town side, to try and keep that area for the pool.
And how tall is this fence?
That's the four-foot pool enclosure fence.
And so that goes, it connects to the white vinyl fence?
Yes. And completes a loop around the pool, and closes in the pool for security.
And some hearing.
Right, so the pool requires a four-foot minimum fence for safety reasons. So they have the appropriate gates and fence. So that's, that's how we finished out the enclosure of the pool.
So, why not put a four-foot fence, the white privacy fence, four feet?
Because then the privacy from Lee Town Road is not possible, and that was a major concern for us.
Well, it is, it's just not as private as you might like, but it does, I mean, that's a solid fence, unlike the rest of the fence that clearly is not, okay?
Well, when we're swimming, wouldn't.
Well, when you're swimming, you're down below, you're, yeah.
Well, if I were, you know, sitting on a lounge chair, I certainly wouldn't want people.
You're below four feet.
Right, but I think it's.
That's all, I'm just, we have to ask the question, because again, you've gone from zero to ten feet. So, for an above-ground pool, for an above-ground pool, I honestly get it. Then you need a four-foot, because you've got a, you know, a three-to-four-foot side of a pool, anybody standing up is gonna be visible. You need six feet. But you've now created the four feet, and then added six feet on top of it. So, that's why we have to ask the question.
Sure.
Because others are gonna ask for it, too, and we need to understand what makes your circumstances different than other homes.
And other people have come in, they built a berm, and then they put their fence on top of it. They put up a three-foot berm, put on a four-foot fence, and say, well, it's only a four-foot fence. No, it went up seven feet.
Right.
That has been turned down in the past.
Yeah, we didn't want, or we don't want anything more than a six-foot privacy fence. It only ends up that way because the wall was necessary to give you a level surface around the pool.
I understand your logic. I understand the logic.
Correct, and again, your white fence, the top two feet are almost like a screen, see-through, so, I mean, so your fence is, when the top two feet are already see-through.
Right, we tried to do that to give at least aesthetically some, you know, flow-through, but.
So with what you've created, there's now a patio in the front yard, right?
Yes.
That's not allowed by code, correct? Patio in the front yard?
It's the fence.
It is allowed? Okay, all right.
It's the fence, I think, that was the.
Back, she had to watch fifteen feet.
The patio's only fifteen feet. No, that I get, it's just patios in the front yard, or, you know.
Well, the six-foot fence.
Kind of putting it, activity in the front yard then, that doesn't generally belong there. Okay, do you have a formal survey of your property at this point? I mean, you're showing us.
Yeah, these are just sketches.
Right.
Right.
This was the survey when I came up to the building department. I was given, without all the colors, of course, I was given that by the building department.
Okay.
As the survey on file for the property.
Yeah, but we would like a survey with.
Part of the pool in the front yard?
Part of the pool?
Right, because it's part of the pool.
What, the patio?
Not attached to it like a deck would be.
Yeah, I don't think that.
And the patio doesn't require the pool to be there, to have it to be there, like a, like a deck would be, like the last one we saw. So, the patio, I think, is a freestanding, well, not exactly freestanding, but I do think it's a separate patio.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. No, when she's asking about the survey, you don't have a survey which shows exactly how far back your recreational vehicle is, where your pool is. This doesn't show your deck on the side of the house. All those things are missing.
So you like.
We're believing you. You say you have it there, and how far it is, but we really should have a survey for our files.
Because what I'm worried about is the right-of-way. Are you literally at your property line when you're measuring, or are you including the right-of-way?
The sheds also don't meet setbacks, I don't believe.
The shed doesn't meet setbacks?
We need to know where your shed is.
Close to the property lines.
Oh, the other shed doesn't meet it either. Oh, okay. How close to your property line is the other shed?
Well, the shed in the other side definitely does, but.
It's twenty-five feet away from your neighbor's property?
I thought it was, I could double-check that.
You need fifteen.
Yeah, I thought.
Oh, sorry, the shed's changed.
We're used to changing.
I have all people should know that. I asked for it.
They're too close to just guess. That's why we need a survey.
Yeah, okay.
All right, so a survey showing all of the elements.
Please, that would be really helpful, because if we're gonna agree to something, and you're gonna need it for your landscape plan, anyway. All right, but for us to be able to create a record as to why we might agree to some of these variances, we need to be sure that we're delineating the variances correctly.
If that's the case, can I give you a smaller copy of this, to show just what we're working with, with the?
For a landscape plan?
No, right now, I have this in just a regular-sized piece of paper. Can I just give that to you?
Is that in here?
I think we have that as part of your application.
I think we have it as a part of your application.
Yeah, I mean, if you give us a copy that's this size for each one of us, that's fine. As long as it shows everything, and as long as we can read the numbers on it.
Yeah, we have it already.
Have a question?
No, but I'm thinking about what the corner lot restrictions.
The package that you put together?
This, here, here it is. Would this help at all, or no, to show?
No, we need to have exact measurements by a surveyor.
So, I think we need to get a survey first.
That protects you, because if you come in and we say, okay, and we give you X amount variance, and you don't fit it, you've got a headache. If the surveyor says it's that far away, granted, then you come back and say the surveyor was wrong, and you have a reason why you didn't meet it, okay? Get an exact survey showing where everything is.
And a landscape plan?
Yes.
Okay, so show us what you're proposing, how tall the landscaping would be.
Are there restrictions on the height of the landscaping?
Not that I've ever heard of, so no.
Could get a fifty-foot tree, I guess.
It would go with the boulders, right?
That's gonna be, trying to plant around the.
No, 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 not at all.
If you get the kind of trees that are gonna grow that tall, that's not a problem.
What we're really looking for is something to screen, just understand that. We're not looking for deciduous trees where the leaves are gonna fall off, okay? We're really looking for something to screen the visibility of it.
No, that goes up, you know, in a height, I mean, it's gotta be tall enough so it's screened, and you have a tall recreational vehicle, so I mean, you wanna see something that's probably twelve feet or something like that, or grow that.
Will grow that tall.
Doesn't have to be that tall when you plant it.
Right. That's why some arborvities will get to fifteen feet, so something like that really would.
Mine died in a month. Mine died in a month.
Okay.
Nice hollies or something, I don't know.
All right, so we'll see you again next month?
I would suggest that you come back in November, because it's going to take almost four to six weeks to get your survey. I don't think you can get it done in the next 30 days.
Aziz has a very valid point. We have two applications that have not been back, did not come back this month because they could not get their surveys. So your first thing would be to start with who did your initial survey? Who did your survey in the first place, or?
I have no idea. It was before.
It should be labeled.
Dick Barger.
Who, oh, Dick Barger? Okay, not going to help you.
Can you steal around?
I've heard the name.
Most probably, there is a, if you call around, usually the surveyors sell their, or.
Their records.
Their records to the next company, so that these records are there, most of them are either on computers or someplace, but yeah, so there is a trail that continues.
His last name again?
Barger.
Barger.
Yeah, it's a pretty.
Richard, Barger.
Also Beadie and Watson, I think is.
R G, Richard.
Beadie and Watson is also a.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
They do good work.
Correct. Yeah, again, just call around, figure out who picked up Richard Barger's work and whoever it got sold to.
But you're going to want to show us where the pool is, where the sheds are.
Yep.
Okay, so that we're clear, that we're taking care of everything at one time.
How far back your retaining wall is that you put up, all that stuff, okay?
Yep.
All right, so yeah, so if, if you don't have it by, in time for them, just call Pam and let her know to not put you on this, the next agenda, and then you'll come back and.
So you are not putting us on for October, or you?
Well, we would normally keep you on here unless you're sure you're not going to have the, any information for us. If there's no update, we're not going to waste anybody's time.
All right.
Okay?
I'll make.
But otherwise, we will keep you on here unless you tell us otherwise.
I don't want to.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I'll do that.
No, that's okay.
See, she just.
We'll, we'll get through this. Okay, so we'll see you again when you have a survey.
Okay.
And then item number 14, Appeal 3889, Morrow Equipment Company. Morrow Equipment Company is requesting an interpretation of, to differentiate a proposed mobile yard crane from that of a structure as defined in the town zoning ordinance with respect to property located at 216 Lime Killen Road, Hubble Junction. Property is in the ownership of Winchester 84 LLC. Good evening.
Good evening.
A mobile crane.
Yes.
Okay, this is going to be interesting. Go ahead.
My name's Richard O'Rourke. I'm with Keenan Bean. We're the attorneys for Morrow Equipment. This is Peter Journe, who is the Vice President for Operations with Morrow Equipment. He's in from their corporate headquarters in Salem, Oregon. We're here this evening based upon a letter dated September 5, which was a response to our request to make sure that our use is permitted, and Morrow Equipment is a company that has facilities all over the country, as well as, I guess, in other countries as well. And the threshold determination I always want to make is, first of all, make sure that the use is permitted, and also determine what are the, what is the relief that's necessary for the application. The reason we're here is because the letter that the zoning administrator and town planner sent stated that, and that's part of the application, you'll have, you have it, as far as the yard crane is concerned, it would appear that interpretation should be obtained to clearly differentiate this device from that of a structure as defined in our zoning law. We do not believe the 30-foot building limit applies, but a clear finding by the zoning board would be the best route. That's why we're here. The, based upon the submission, you know that the crane that we will have will have a height of approximately 142 feet, and it's a mobile crane. It is one that moves on the site. Certainly, you could have a crane, and Mr. Journe can explain this far better than I, you could have a crane with tires that wheels around. However, for safety reasons, this electric crane, not only is it safer, but it's much more environmentally friendly because it's electric, as opposed to if you had a crane with diesel or gas that's noisy and emits fumes and things of that nature. So the purpose of our, our visit is just to make sure that the inference that we drew from the building inspector, the building department, as well as the planner, that this in fact is equipment, and that it does not require any variance, that's why we're here. If I may, just one last piece that I think is somewhat dispositive and important, is that among the papers we cited, under the real property law in the state of New York, this crane would not be assessable as a structure, in that there have been determinations made previously, such a piece of equipment is in fact equipment. It's not a structure, so therefore, the real property department can't assess it as a structure.
Okay.
So with that, perhaps Mr. Journe can give you a little bit more background about the company if you're interested. We're on, we're on Lime Killen Road, 216, not subject to the proposed moratorium, so we're hoping to move forward as quickly as possible.
Okay, let me just read the part of the code first, just so that the members know exactly what we're talking about. So you're requesting the interpretation of structure, and the code says, "Structure is any man-made building or thing that is constructed or erected, whether of natural, man-made, or processed materials, the use of which requires location on or below the ground, or attachment to something having location on the ground. Structures are not permitted in buffer areas." So with that said, can you explain, is the crane attached to the ground?
No.
Exactly, okay.
That's, that's our point.
That's your point.
If it was, you know, if these were concrete footings in a stationary crane, there's no question it'd be a structure. But here, simply because it is, it is mobile, it moves around, and it is not affixed to the ground, it should not be deemed a structure. So therefore, as a piece of equipment, it's not a structure, and it's exempt from the dimensional restrictions in terms of height.
What color is it? 140 feet is.
Our company colors, the cranes are from the manufacturer, yellow.
Okay.
That is the color of the crane, but we are not opposed to painting the crane a different color if that's environmentally sensitive to the area.
Okay.
So the crane is equipment that's going to run on like railroad tracks?
It runs on rails similar to railroad tracks, but they're not on wooden, they're not on wooden rails like you would a train track.
And not fixed to the ground?
No, the rails, no, the rails can be moved.
Okay, yeah, so again, it's not, yeah.
Okay, that's what was my question, that's what I was getting.
Yeah, there's, the rails, the rails sit on concrete, but the rails themselves are movable.
Okay.
They're not permanently attached to the ground. They can be unbolted, they can be moved.
So if you just had a large yard coming into your equipment place, you could put this, set this thing up, let it run him back and forth while you needed it, and pick it up and take it all away without attaching it to anything?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, the crane can be disassembled, it can, and that's typical of what we do, because the crane, in some instances, we could change the crane. We could put, you know, as we develop into technology, we could put a newer crane in at a different time, so that's how our business model is with our cranes.
And so is your crane, my understa, your moving crane equipment, right?
Yes, we.
Okay, that's what I thought.
We're the crane business, so we use one of our own cranes to handle the components when they're disassembled, so they're in our storage facilities.
Okay, and so these cranes are going to other work locations, so its location adjacent to I-84 absolutely makes sense.
Yes.
How visible from 84 is this?
Well, from 84, I think that it's, it'll be visible just above the tree lines.
Okay.
But as far as being completely visible, I don't, I don't think the facility itself would even be visible because of the tree line issues there, so.
That's fine. I was just curious, the crane itself, the, what the site plan looks like is the planning board's jurisdiction, not ours, so.
Okay.
That's fine. I'm not overstepping our bounds here. All right, so questions or comments from board members? If not, we do need, we do need to set a public hearing.
Well, again, you had mentioned that, so basically, you're going to have a huge concrete pad, and then on the top of the concrete pad, you're going to put these metal rails, which will be bolted, four of, four rails bolted onto this concrete, and on that bolted concrete rails, you're going to put wheels of this particular crane so it can go back and forth.